Good morning good morning good morning hey Pan how are you doing how are you doing good morning anointed prayers how are you doing happy Wednesday to everybody I had a show scheduled yesterday but due to a situation coming up I had to cancel that show and Monday night we did a show and we were talking about Kevin DeLeon and Seal Sodillo these are people from Los Angeles California that was caught on tape making racist remarks and they were people were boycotting outside of DeLeon's home and I did a show they wanted them removed because of the racist comments and I was so so high on together and DJ Chuck because I've seen the way you know politicians work so I want to say that my faith has been yeah I sound better um my faith has been restored and some politicians doing the right things and so thank you higher power because these two people they were removed Kevin DeLeon and Gil Sodillo and I did not feel like they were going to be removed but they was they were removed by acting Los Angeles City Council President so he's the acting president and so he removed them so thank goodness why we finally for me I finally saw action taken for members of any branch of government in any state in any city that they were removed hey Shay love okay you at work paper hey Shay love anointed prayers also everyone Miss Anointed prayers she always keeps us updated on different tragedies that's going on around the world and she make post and I pray as I tell people the power of prayer you just don't know and we are looking at some horrific things right in front of our eyes now I want to thank Shay love for all of her motivation your voice is being heard and it's powerful anointed prayers you got a nice voice too me hey y'all gotta take me as I am I done I done lived to be 60 and I can't focus on if I'm saying my words properly I'm taking a whole lot of medication over here and so you gotta take me as I am but over in Nigeria they got 600 and three people dead so keep Nigeria in your prayers hey six bows is back love and live show what's the new challenges are there any new challenges that's going on because if so I'm gonna have to I'm gonna have to get them and I love going over there to to love and and live show her and her nephew I thought it was her son but she said her nephew and she probably thinks of him as her son anyway I love the chemistry that they have it's awesome you can see the love that they have for each other and that is awesome that's awesome it's great to see the positive things six bows honey yep everybody wave them haters back keep pushing keep moving I go on everybody shows I do not discriminate I did my my show the other day where I touched on the things that divide black people and I I said religion why why on the internet we got people fighting over scriptures and interpretation of the scriptures God is not of confusion a show showed up in my algorithms and I clicked on the show and I'm like uh-uh no 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 I respect our religion and you just proved my point sir I'm thinking of why we are divided are you kidding me we want to attack people over their interpretation of a scripture like this is unreal we are living in some times that is unbelievable all of this darkness that's in this world the world is bad it's the people in the world I am sitting here wondering as I stated in my shoulder other day I said the two things that divide black people one is religion and the others politics and I don't even discuss them but I'm gonna talk about it today it's not right I should never come on the internet and see where someone is being attacked to because of this the way they interpret a Bible scripture you want to attack and threaten people you know when you have organization or however whatever well because I'm saying organizations whatever chapter even here on the internet you know you got certain groups of people they believe this whatever group you belong to you should be respectful you this is so true love and live show people are working hard to prove their right and the other person wrong and you know when we did that show Monday night I had to apologize to one of the guys because I had got in my personal feelings about a situation that had happened here in Joliet Illinois where I protested for this mayor to be removed it didn't happen so I put my personal feelings and I apologize to the person because I said I got so worked up thinking about how this mayor didn't get removed so I did not think that they would remove those two gentlemen from the city council in LA over some racist remarks things and conditions are too critical today we need to learn how to disagree without attacking each other hey rocking with the truth love and live show that's true I mean what I'm sitting up here I'm gonna drop the link I would never if you display behavior of attacking people over Bible scriptures I could never never ever fool with you because God is not the author of confusion why are we arguing over Bible scriptures we're attacking people like how low can we get now this is low down good morning Derek I'm gonna drop the link if anybody want to come down and I was supposed to do this show because together and Chuck they really believed that something was gonna happen I didn't I put my personal feelings in it with the situation that happened here in Joliet Illinois where our mayor had assaulted two black men and the city council did not remove him when they voted I am a woman I can come back and apologize when I've done something wrong or said something wrong and so thank goodness they were removed and I did get a little you know emotional because of the situation that happened and if you go through my videos I don't know if it was on my darling April channel or the April showers channel and you can see where we were out protesting I was at every rally we shut down the intersection you know we were really trying so hard going to city council meetings because this guy should have been removed and he was not removed and I'm still mad to this day that they did not remove him and the city council members that didn't even vote him out so I gotta look at them as y'all must have owed him something because y'all didn't vote to remove him and one of them is the city councilman that's my he represents where I stay at so I really haven't been talking to him as much I done called him out on some stuff that goes on in the community and it is what it is whatever happened to giving the answer in meekness and fear Derek how are you doing if you feel that someone has misinterpretation scriptures simply do your own video with your interpretation without attacking or mentioning the other person in your video share your truth and leave it and that is so correct anointed I mean you know I'm just blown away and I'm not gonna even mention names but I can say you know I I was with them I would go over with these people and I would listen to them because see first of all I'm me and I was raised to respect everybody and I set up and I listened to you talk about what the Bible what the Baptist ain't doing what other people ain't doing but your word is God it's bond no you teach the word and leave it like that when you attack other religions and stuff you're a bully and then I see all of these videos popping up about you and you're people are being attacked over scriptures I looked at you now as the devil y'all done let slithering snakes come in chill your head up and you attacking people like this is crazy but sanctify the Lord God in your hearts and be ready always to give a answer um hey just be but again like I said in my shoulder other day and this is so weird because I talked about this in my show the reason why black people will never come together because we're we're too busy fighting each other over what religion they serve that is crazy you are supposed to respect everyone keep it moving because when we go when we go to the bank when these community leaders or people want to go to the bank to get a loan or they trying to get grants the money is green the money don't say Baptist the money don't say nothing it's green so why 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 are we attacking people yeah you know this is the kind of stuff this stuff showed up love and live show hey just be and I clicked on that link and I'm like oh my goodness but then another video showed up someone is being threatened 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 over their interpretation or they say well I understand it like this you ain't supposed to get mad at that person curse them out and all of this stuff y'all the devil you better be careful see the way you know you running around here mistreating people now you attacking folks over scriptures something ain't right I mean why are we arguing oh my goodness and and it's so weird because I did the show Monday saying why we would never unify you know we got people that's beefing on the internet for hours threatening a woman over her interpretation because she called you out on her interpretation of a scripture and yes Derek Iverson we all have freedom of speech but now know how you feel is getting attacked but we got to get back to agreeing to disagree the world has changed and will continue and this is so true and and Kanye West he has his freedom of speech to express the way he feels about certain things so you can't you can't even express how you feel and people want to destroy you over your freedom of speech or what you said if you don't like the man you won't entertain it you wouldn't keep up with what's going on you would be like oh he has that right you're taking everything this man is saying trying to pick it apart and make something out of it this is ludicrous yes George Floyd had bitten off in his body when he passed end of story all he said is the police might have did it or he might have had it that's it you want to sue him over making a statement you look ignorant as black people it it just this is heartbreaking yes help us help us you know anointed prayers says we all coming to the knowledge of the truth at different times in our walk with God if you feel someone is interpreting a scripture wrong you can pray that God gives them the true interpretation that's all that's all and I hate this stuff showed up in my algorithms and I listened well I didn't listen to it all I I um I listened to a little bit of it and then you know yeah check this out you know I'm nosy too you know ain't no sense in me faking the funk so then I go over to the other channel of the person that's being attacked to see what they were saying they're being attacked over scripture the way they interpreted they she done been attacked so bad that police reports have been made and I'm like boy oh boy boy oh boy I'm gonna tell I'm gonna tell my listeners this be careful how you treat people be careful when you attack someone when they are going through health conditions be careful when you disrespect your elders because I'm gonna tell you God don't like ugly your karma what you put out there that's bad you look up you done let a slithering snake come in and they will destroy you because you've mistreated people you dog them out at a low time in their life you treated them like they were shit when they was going through health condition none of that stuff should have never ever entered a person's mind when they are going through health conditions for you to attack them Again, I won't say names. This is awful. But see. You being attacked now. God don't like ugly. It used to be years before you would see karma. Shoot karma, you might see karma now, the next day. And it's awful. And you are so right. Anointed. Bashing, attacking. Frightening on the T and negativity. Gets views on these here YouTube streets. And that, that's terrible. I mean, what does that say about us as people? I'm not entertaining any beef. I don't care what nobody say about me. I am not. I'm just not gonna go there. Cause my health. I'm not gonna take that in. Now 10 or 20 years ago. When I was younger. I might have gave you a run for your money, I might have been beefing too, I don't know. But beefing ain't good. Yeah, dishing. Did, um, dishing out of the T nut fishing. Correct. And so. Um. It's sad. It's sad. It's sad. That people aren't going to shows. That's gonna motivate them. Uplift them. Play Family Feud. Looking at their towns. You can learn how to embroider. You can learn how to make shirts. I mean, I, you got people on here. That's. That, that's doing so many. So many good things. On YouTube. If you are following somebody. And I don't care who it is. That's displaying behavior of attacking people. You ain't sitting either to be sitting there in their chat. Entertaining this mess. If we are going to try to stop. All of this negativity. And beefs. Then you should not go in anybody's shows. That has beefs. Derek says karma comes within seconds depending on the offense, right? That's why I choose not to go there. God don't play. See, they don't even realize this. See, that's why they trying to take. God out of everything. Yeah, I do the love call too. I choose to do the love walk. There are too many things going on in these end times. That we are dealing with instead of attacking other people about scripture interpretation. Girl, I was floored. I thought. Thought the R S K sector was crazy. And then I'm looking at. People. That have chosen to challenge someone over a scripture. To be humiliated, cursed out, talked about. This, this is crazy. So you're spending all of this time doing this. When you could be helping out in your community. Call a relative you ain't talked to. Clean your house up. But you choose. To beef. To, to go into the person. That's beefing. Like. If you in their show, you are part of the problem. Because the solution would be. I am not going to entertain anybody that's beefing. I'm not gonna go in their channels, I'm not gonna support this foolishness. They would not be able to keep this stuff up. If individuals. And people. Decide. That, uh-uh, no. I'm not doing this. I'm not supporting this. Each time you go in somebody's shows that's beefing. You're giving them more energy. You're giving them more energy to keep continuing to beef. Stop entertaining it. Bespil says, I just choose like-minded people. You know, I have, I have some people I talk to. And we be on the conference call. And man, we disagree over some stuff. They done challenged me with Kanye West. And we done laughed about it. And we kept it moving. I didn't tell them I was gonna kill them. Like. Are you serious? Again, this is the reason. We would never unite. We are still, and I'm gonna say it. We are the pettiest folks. We like drama. And half of these people ain't even practicing what they preach out here. Not gonna tarnish my brand. Uh. Anointed prayer says, I do believe. In people speaking up for matters of justice, but I don't have to bash, bully, or threaten others about their opinion. Yeah. I mean, what happened to agree to disagree? Again, another reason. Why we're not united? This is it. This is it. It's sad. I'm floored. I'm, I'm hurt. That people are over here attacking people over some Bible scriptures. Threatening people. Over their interpretation of a Bible scripture. Like really? The cat is almost black, I love my cat. Somebody comes and say, no, the cat is blue. I'm like, okay. I know I got a black cat. Okay, keep it moving. I ain't getting ready to go there. With nobody. But as a woman. That has faith. And I know that there is a higher power. Out there. And I know. If it wasn't for him. I know. Of a, of situations. That God. Say, oh, gotta remember, it's a lot of things you can't say on YouTube. But I know. If it wasn't for the higher power. I could be in jail. I could be prisoned for life. I fell and broke a leg. I went tumbling down some steps. My spine could have been messed up. Thank God it was just my leg. So I know. I know there's a force out there. I know a situation that I won't talk about, that's my business. That I know. He in the seat. And I know. You know, I just tell people, do you? Respect each other. And again. My heart, I mean. I'm just blown away. This is disturbing to me. Cause I used to go over there. In these people's channels. Hadn't been in a while. God don't like ugly, God ain't the author of confusion. Hold on, I gotta announce. But I thought. I have seen it all. As the older folks used to say, keep on living. You know, yeah. These people are internet gangsters, you see them in person, they ain't gonna bust the grave. Trust me, I know. Some of these people. That are hiding behind. These computers and phones. Coming in. Acting like they running stuff. They're internet bullies. And anybody that supports. This behavior. You might as well be up there too. Cause you're giving them the power. To keep going. Cause you're going to their shows. Some people are getting record number of views due to beef. I never thought I would see the day. That people are on the internet. Frightened over. A scripture from the Bible. Lord, help us. I hope and pray. And I'm waiting, I'm calling to in the seat. I'm calling on that higher power. Because I'm, I'm just. I'm floored right now. But then I wanna have a praise party. God is not the author of confusion. Then you on the internet. Lot of these people ain't showing their faces. We don't know what they look like. They could be your neighbor. You like, right? And they remember what you said about them on YouTube. And they ready to kick your behind. I wanna thank everybody for coming in, this was just a short show. I had the show set up for last night. But like I said, I had got some news. And, um. You know, I have to. Have my mind right. When I come on YouTube. I had to make sure I don't mention names. This is crazy. But. I done took my medicine, I'm gonna take me a nap. I've been going to some great shows. I'm not supporting. Anybody. From any sector on YouTube. If they are beefing. They not getting my vote. They not getting my attention, nor my time. I am not going. To enable. A person. That is attacking someone over scriptures. They couldn't have my time. That says very much. About the people. That's following these people that are beefing. You're supporting it. I wanna thank everybody. Again. For listening to little old me. April showers. And I'm out.